Prosecutor saying he murdered his girlfriend at a dump. Matthew Lucas being charged murderer of Heidi Chase. The county DA says police responded to the couple's home on Fourth Third this morning. Heidi Chase dead with obvious signs of injuries to her face. Police recovering a blood-soaked hammer. Lucas had to.
President, your mic is open. Thank you.
Hi, Gene.
Hello.
Hi, Gene. Can you hear me? I can hear you.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful conversation, guys.
Mr. Joseph Mellon.
Hi there.
How are you doing?
Pretty good. Good. Five today.
Hey, Josh.
Yeah.
Something hit me today. Have we been paid?
Um.
Or do we contribute that to something?
Um, I declined my dollar because I didn't want to get a W two for a dollar. Had my tax guys, but spend a hundred dollars processing a one dollar uh YouTube.
It's just somebody had asked me if we got paid. I said, yeah. What do they pay you? I said, a dollar. One big, one big one.
No cost of living increase either.
When I worked for Ford Motor Company, those were. The cost of living was the one thing everybody waited for.
Yeah.
Always welcome. How long are you keeping your vote in?
Uh, I'm trying to arrange for the um haul out. Uh, I don't have a date yet.
Gene, Brian pulled his boat today.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, he's done for the year.
That's early.
Doesn't have a stern man anymore.
Yeah, Bill struggles with that, too.
Uh, Gene, do you know if Tony was gonna join us tonight?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Last thing he said was, I'll see you tonight.
Okay, all right, in a couple minutes.
Oh, yeah, we've got a couple.
God bless you.
Thank you. Hi, Linda. Linda? No, Sheila.
Sheila.
Hi, Sheila.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Hey, Tony.
Hello.
You need a minute to um? Get set up, Tony, or are you good to go?
Give me thirty seconds.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, I apologize for not having a screen. But I have yet to have the time. Why? I don't know. To go over and get a new phone. And I always use my phone. I probably should. Probably should use my laptop. But anyhow, this week, I'm going to, I'll make that journey.
All right.
So for now, you have the big G.
Yeah. All right, being live stream. So um. So when it's being livestreamed, Tony, does that mean it's on the cable channel?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, if you're good to go, Tony, um, you and I are ready to go. Um, I think Mark is unavailable to a, to a prior commitment. Um, so um, I'll be acting chair today. So with that, um, the Board of Selecting meeting for September twentieth, twenty twenty-three is now in session at six thirty-three PM. Um, so we have some. Our usual announcements, um, can do those. Uh, opening comments, uh, compost area is open on Wednesdays and Saturdays from nine AM to three PM. Twenty twenty-three resident sticker, parking stickers required. Visit of Works page at not.org for a full list of acceptable material. Recycling for metal, white goods, TVs, computers is the last Saturday of each month until October twenty-eighth. From eight AM to twelve PM noon behind the DPW garage on Flash Road. Twenty twenty-three resident sticker is required in Public Works Department at not.org for accepted materials. Uh, certain fees may apply. Curbside leaf pickup begins in October. Uh, every Monday except Columbus Day. The week of Columbus Day, the bags will be picked up on Tuesday, October eleventh. Leaves must be in biodegradable bags only. No open barrels, roots, root balls, or branches bigger than four inches in diameter. Bags must be out by seven AM. Market by the Sea, formerly the Hot Farmers Market, um, is Saturdays, ten AM to one PM at Flash Road. Uh, Flash Road on October fourteenth. Um, so that's just a Saturday, ten to one on October fourteenth at Flash Road. For more information to become a vendor, visit the market page at hot.org or email kaytaylor@not.org. Uh, next up is um, tax classification hearing. Uh, well, before we move to that, um, Gene, did you have any additional opening comments?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay, and neither do I. Uh, so the next, next item on the agenda is the tax classification hearing with the Board of Assessors. Um, we're gonna vote to approve a single tax rate, vote on exemption, exceptions. And um, the Board of Assessors will announce some the excess levy capacity. So, um. There was a separate.
Move to open the hearing.
Yeah.
Did you make the most? Did you make the motion to open the hearing?
Uh, I have not yet. Um, let me do that. Hang on one second. Um, I moved that the Board of Selectmen with the Board of Assessors opened the FY twenty twenty-four uh, tax classification hearing.
Second.
Okay, so the hearing is now open. Um, I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a residential factor of one and not adopt the following: a residential exemption, a small commercial exemption, a senior means tested exemption, and to not grant a discount for open space for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And that the assessors have informed the board that the excess levy capacity for the current fiscal year is calculated as four million one hundred and thirty-eight, oh, excuse me, four thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents.
Second of the motion.
Excuse me, Josh. I think we also need to do a roll call. At least I have that on my agenda. I just want to make sure we don't miss anything.
Yeah, um.
The roll call in the previous motion, yes.
Right, I guess we didn't, uh, we didn't actually vote on that. So, um. Uh, is there any discussion on uh, the motion that opened the? Uh.
Hearing.
The classification hearing. Any discussion on that, Gene? I don't have any.
No.
Okay, so with no discussion, um, all in favor, roll call vote.
Gene can't the eye?
Josh ain't for mine. Okay.
Roll call vote for the Board of Assessors, David Hunt, yes.
Catherine Sherber, aye. And town assessor Sheila Hamilton, aye.
Okay, Josh.
Okay, so um, now we um, are in the discussion phase of the uh, second motion, which was um, the residential factor of one, the list of exemptions that we're not adopting, and um the assessors' fiscal.
Josh, could you reread that again?
Yeah, I guess probably the, okay, there, I'm gonna remake motion. I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a residential factor of one and not adopt the following: a residential exemption, a small commercial exemption, a senior means tested exemption, and to not grant a discount for open space for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And that the assessors have informed the board that the excess levy capacity for the current fiscal year is calculated as four thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents.
Secondly.
Okay, any discussion on this motion?
Yes, uh, the, so this motion uh, represents the same practice that the town in the heart goes through on an annual basis. Um, a residential factor of one essentially, essentially means, and Sheila, feel free to.
Yeah.
Sheila, I wanna let you take this, actually.
All right, um, every year, you're right, um, Tony, that the Board of Selectmen holds um, a public hearing to determine the percentage of the town's property tax levy to be borne by each major property class. This responsibility and these responsibilities and procedures are described in chapter forty, section fifty-six of the Massachusetts general laws, in case anybody wants to read that. Um, what, what the residential factor means is one means that there would be one single tax rate for the residential, the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes in the town. If they wanted to, they could, um, you know, vote a different factor where they would shift the tax burden. Right now, our um, percent ninety-six point two percent is residential and three point eight is commercial, industrial, and personal. So it doesn't make a lot of sense at this, with that um disparity between the different classes of property, where it would shift burden and give a tax break to others. Uh, the other is the residential exemption. That is something that the selectmen may vote to um adopt by giving the homeowners um, that live in their property a, a um, tax exemption, and the burden would fall on the other residential properties. There is a small commercial exemption, but again, one point two percent of the properties are in the commercial class, so it really um doesn't really benefit them that much. If there was more, maybe. The senior means tested exemption, uh, that's a new one last year. So again, we have to vote on that this year. And that requires a town meeting vote to accept this exemption. And then we have to contact our senator or our representative and create a bill that the state legislative would vote on. Um, it's a complicated um exemption, and it does take a lot of work to get something like that accomplished. What that exemption could do um, is grant anywhere from fifty percent to a hundred percent of the tax bill. Um, I'm not so sure, being such a small community, that is something that would be beneficial. I think we have regular tax exemptions and we have tax deferral process. So unless we want to make a change, and we can look into it, if the selectman would like to, um, I think that you shouldn't adopt that. The open space discount, we have no class um, of property in town that is open space. That means that it's private property that has been um um, made to be open for public use. And unless somebody from the public wants to donate uh, some of their property for that kind of use, there's no need to adopt it because we don't have that class of property. And so if anybody has a question other than yes, I think that the excess levy capacity might be off by a penny. Um. Josh, I think it was four thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents, not sixty.
Okay.
Aye.
Sheila, Sheila, are there any exemptions for homeowners um who have large open space tracts of land? But have agreed or not agreed, but have made the decision not to build on it?
Um, no, except. Um, no, except for Warp Street, we do have and Nahat Road, I think. Costin and Halls, they kind of abut each other. Their property is in a federal program of open space. But it's not in our town criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but no, no one has come forward to ask or donate their property as open space. And I'm not so sure, I didn't double check, there may be a minimum requirement of acreage.
Thank you. Excess tax. Uh, excess level capacity of four thousand one thirty-eighths and sixty-five cents. Is a product of. What, you know, what our tax rate is going to be. And, you know, if you could talk to that and how that compares to the last year and how we compare to other communities as far as going through this process.
Yeah, well, this year being four thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents, last year was ten, over ten thousand dollars. And what that means is in the levy limit. The maximum amount of levy, we're just short this four thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. And we can't get to, you know, zero. Not yet, anyway. But it changes and it's just a multiplication because of the mathematics of. The percentage of all our classes of property and how we have to get to a single tax rate. There's not much else you can do other than, as if Allison's on, you can talk about playing with the. It's a a product of oval and estimated receipts.
But if we, if our tax rate went up, if our tax rate went up even one penny. We would end up being over our levy capacity and therefore in violation of the two and a half percent. Right, so this is high, so this, so our tax, you know, is as high as it possibly can go. Even though we're leaving about forty-one hundred dollars on the table. And what's our tax rate going to be?
Nine dollars and seven cents.
And what was it last year?
Last year was nine dollars and nine cents, so we're only down two cents.
So we're down two cents, which means values went up a little bit. Last year, we were the lowest in Essex County, so I assume we're probably gonna be the lowest in Essex County again this year. And you mentioned that our department had meeting the other day that, you know, we're fairly early in the process. Did you repeat that?
Or even better, I think that we're on time for being a semi-annual community and that we should be getting our tax bills out October first, but. This year, that's a Sunday, so the tax bills look like, you know, with the approval process and, you know, printing of the bills and the mailing. They should go out Monday, October the second, do them payable November the first.
And we're the first community to have our tax rate set in Essex County?
Yep.
And what, like the eighth in the whole state?
Yep, as of Monday, yeah, we were about the, we'll be about the eighth.
So the reason I asked those questions and wanted to make those points is that. The assessors office and through Sheila's leadership, as well as the finance department through Allison. Pieto and Ed Locke, they came together, we met as a group. You know, over a month ago and talked about, you know, the process to get to tonight and. So that we could get bills out, you know, October first to the second. The last few years, bills have gone out the early November, which is tough on residents because then the bills are due at the end of November, early December. And that's right when people are starting to shop for Christmas and, you know, it could be an expensive time of year. So we really, the goal set by us earlier in the year. That we would get bills, real tax bills out early, you know, on time and early October this year. And so I just wanted, I asked those questions to Sheila because I wanted to commend her. The board of assessors and the finance team for all their help and commitment to stick into that goal. And that's why we're, you know, having our task classification hearing tonight, so that we can stay on that schedule and get those bills out on time.
Thank you.
Yeah, Sheila, a question, maybe I missed this. But I have to ask the question, what's a senior means tested exemption?
That is an exemption that the town can adopt at town meeting. And it's criteria that the town would create, so, you know, based upon. You know, talking again with the finance to mean, you know, Allison, because it would affect overlay, you know, Tony. The board of selectmen, the board of assessors on what kind of age limit? What would be the asset limit? What would be the income limit? How many years residents do you have to be? So you'd have to create all of the criteria ahead of time, you have to bring it to town meeting, town meeting has to vote for it. And that the exemption amount can be anywhere from fifty percent to a hundred percent. So, yeah, so that's different. And then, once we get town meeting vote, then we'd have to go to our state senator and representative. And they'd create a bill that would be passed by the legislator so that we can adopt that particular exemption. But as I stated, I do have exemptions for the elderly and I also have, we have a tax deferral program. So I, you know, I think that we just raised the amounts and I think it's a, it's a fair amount and it helps everybody. You know, we also have veterans exemptions too, but I'm talking just the elderly.
Thank you, and thank, thank you, all you guys for the great job you do.
Okay, so now I think the board can vote on their factor and all their. What they're gonna do with all the exemptions.
All right, this one.
There's any other question?
So all, all these, the, the residential factor and all the exemption declines. And open space discount, all that is unchanged from the past few years, correct?
Been unchanged forever, I think, at least, at least forty.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make that point, so essentially, we're making no change at all in the. Structure, all right, any discussion from Eugene?
No, I'm fine.
All right, roll call vote.
Jean can't the eye.
Josh, enter mine. The next one is voting on lean.
Nope, you can first close the tax classification.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, I moved the board of selectmen vote to close FY twenty-four tax classification hearing.
Do we, do we have to open it, is this, being a hearing, do we have to open it up for comment? You know?
I'll be right back.
Yes, it's a hearing, so we should at least give the public a chance to offer any input they may have.
All right, well, if anybody asks, wants to ask a question or make a comment, you can unmute yourself on your screen. Raise your hand if you know how to do it. So we can know to call on you and failing, failing ability to unmute, you could put something in the chat.
Back.
All right, I don't see anybody unmuting themselves. So with that, I'll assume there are no questions or comments from the public during this hearing. And. So roll call vote on the motion to close the hearing.
Jean can't the eye.
Josh, enter mine, okay.
Assessors vote on the motion to close, David Hunt, aye.
Catherine Sherber, aye. Town assessor Sheila Hamilton, aye.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
You. Moving forward on getting the tax rate approved now, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, good work.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, where you have to take a vote on leans. For unpaid water and sewer bills, I think there were some unpaid trash bills, so on. So let me, Kristen had emailed a new motion with the amount filled in, so let me just. Open that.
I have it as well.
Okay, I'll make the motion, Gene, I moved that the board of selectmen vote to approve committing to the board of assessors unpaid FY twenty-three. Unpaid utility. And rubbish accounts in the amount of one hundred and five thousand eight hundred and eighteen. Team dollars and sixty cents as presented by the treasurer collector to be added to the annual tax. As a municipal charges in lean to be subject to the provisions of the law relative to interest on taxes.
Seconded.
Discussion.
This is a, this is a pretty good number. Last year, it was around eighty thousand, but it was also a month later. The. Ed and the finance team did a really good job of sending late bills out. Earlier in, back in July, and then even this week, they were actually, you know, making phone calls to folks on the list. We also put it. Put it out there on the message board. And a lot of people came in because of those efforts to avoid. So I just wanted to also commend them on their efforts and commend the residents. For paying their, paying their utility bills, because this is a pretty low number, you know, given that we're a month earlier in the process.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, still. A low number, but still a hundred and thirty-one people with some outstanding bills, so. Those will be applied to their taxes, I guess. All right, I didn't have any other discussion on that, did you, Gene?
No.
All right, with that, roll call vote.
Jean can't the eye.
Josh, enter mine. Next, we have a vote to approve some requests. I've moved that the board of selectmen vote to approve the annual PTO Halloween bash for October twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Starting at two PM at the Little League Field.
Seconded.
Okay, this is an annual event hosted by the Johnson School PTO and volunteers. The event will take place at the Nahat Little League Babe Ruth Field. And in the parking lot, events include hayrides, games, trunk or treat in the parking lot, haunted house, a DJ. Food and more, this event is open to all. Yeah, sounds good, any other discussion, Gene?
No.
Roll call vote.
Jean can't the eye.
Josh, enter mine. We, oh, there it is.
Meeting minutes.
Yep, I moved the board of selectmen vote to approve the board of selectmen meeting minutes from June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, July nineteenth. Twenty twenty-three and August second, twenty twenty-three.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
None.
Roll call vote.
Jean can't the eye.
Josh, enter mine. Okay, moving on to ongoing business. We have a one-day liquor license application. I moved that the board of selectmen vote to approve a one-day wine and malt liquor license to the Nahat Village Church, twenty-seven Cliff Street, Nahat. Mass, oh, one nine oh eight for Saturday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, for a concert from five. PM to seven PM with.
Seconded.
Okay. This or this event's being organized by Jim McCarthy, as he tends on the call. Brett Henry will be catering and serving and supplying the food and alcohol for the event. Jen, did you wanna say some words?
Before Jen responds, if she responds, did we get that right, five to seven with? Was there something added?
Yeah, it seemed to be truncated in, in my copy of the motions.
Okay.
Now, Jen, we can't hear you for some reason. Is, is, is Ayla Brown, is that what we're missing in that? Is it Ayla Brown that's gonna be performing?
Okay.
Making your head, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Ayla Brown will be performing, I think, with someone else, possibly your husband. Ayla Brown is the daughter of a former Massachusetts Senator Scott Brown. I think she was on American Idol or one of those type shows. Okay, that's what I do about Ayla Brown. Nice event.
And in the chat, Jen said there'd be wine and appetizers. Between five and seven PM.
Excellent.
Sounds great. Okay, any further discussion on this? Roll call vote.
Jean can't the eye.
Josh, enter mine. Next on the agenda is town administrator goals update. I think for the detailed discussion, it would be best to wait for Mark calling in. To join us, because A, he's one-third of the board and B, he's the chairman of the board. But maybe we can talk just briefly. Explain how this process has been working, so we, we. Gave a set of goals to Mr. Barletta for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. At the end of twenty twenty-three fiscal year, twenty twenty-three. Tony submitted his thoughts on how he did versus those goals. And then each of the selectmen took those goals and graded. Graded Tony on how we did versus those goals, the grades choices being needs improvement. Meets expectations and exceeds expectations and then accompanying that with a brief explanation of the ranking. So each of us selectmen have gone through, assessed how Tony did versus his twenty twenty-three goals. And turn those in, and Kristen Taylor's compiling them together and. At the next meeting when Mark's there, or the next meeting that we're all present, we can go through those. How that worked out. And the, the second action that we have done is. Provide a new set of goals for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four years. Some of them, at least in the case of what I submitted, were ongoing, I think. Most of us probably had some of those together ongoing, some of them evolved, for example. One goal was to get the. Fund, secure funding for the housing production plan. At town meeting that was accomplished, so that goal, in my case, morphed into. Assisted how the, the housing and production plan subcommittee as, as the new goal, so the evolution of the goal. And then some of them went away, in my case, and. And a new important goal was added. And a new important goal was added, so that's how I approached it and. I think at the next meeting, if we're all there, all those things will be compiled and we can kind of go through the new goals. That's all I had to say, Gene. I don't know if you had anything to add.
No, I did pretty much the same thing that you've done. The only thing that, that I was missing is, or am missing. Is I didn't realize we were going new goals until we had reviewed and established the timeframe for the old goals.
Yeah, okay, so maybe over the next week or so we can. Not, well.
I'll, I'll put together, I'll put like you, I'll put together. The new goals, but Tony, did. Did we, or Josh, did we talk about a timeframe for the goals that are outstanding? Or did we leave that out?
We left it out, but we can, we can. Do you mean like due dates essentially, or?
Yeah.
I guess, I guess implicit would be within the year, but. But, but maybe it's better to be explicit, so maybe we should do that. The way we've done this the last couple of years. Is. Each selectman submitted their goals. You know, through the T A and I volunteered to compile them into one, because one, one, one set. With the contributions from each, and I can do that again if. If that's agreeable to you and selectmen calling, Gene.
Well, we, we, we could, we could take in, in umbrella that we could make it. Presumptive, presumptively, we could make it so that. Everything that we talk about at the next meeting in terms of goals and objectives. Would have a one-year timeframe from that point on. That's, you know, that's just a thought.
Yeah.
But then you've got some goals in there. That I'm already asking for three-year or five-year timeframes, five-year. Plans that. Would work themselves out over that period of time, and maybe one year has already gone by. If you know what I'm saying.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, maybe I'll go through them and, and see what makes sense for applicable dates or deadlines. With that in mind and resubmit and. Maybe Kristen can compile them into a master list for us, something like that.
I'm, I'm just looking at one of them here, review with the Board of Selectmen a five-year financial forecast. So, you know, that's in there already.
Yeah.
We've established five years, we're talking about it now, we'll revisit it as each year goes by.
Yeah, 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 so that, and, and sometimes it's good to say, pick a date for that, you know, like. You know, in December, we'll review that. And the reason I say that is sometimes if it just says, review it and there's no date, then it takes one of us. Going back and looking at and saying, this never happened, let's schedule it. So I actually did that in, in one of the, the existing goals, which was on for. Providing status of CPC funded. Projects. And, but we didn't say. How frequently or when, so I picked three months and said, you know, so it's essentially every four months, how's it going? Just run through the list and talk, how it's going, as an example, where I, I picked a particular month to make it sort of. Get it on the calendar, so to speak. Yeah, so maybe, maybe I'll take, maybe we both want to take ours back and, and think about where we might want to put. Schedule requirements and then we submitted Kristen. How's that sound?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, all right, let's do that. Anything else on the?
Tony. Yeah, it sounds, that's helpful to me too, so I'm in favor of that. All right, so we can, we can go through that. Go ahead, Josh, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's, that's all I had to say on the T A goals updates for today.
All right, great.
Next on the agenda is. Preserving East Point. So on Friday, September fifteenth. Nahat served a motion for summary judgment on the Emmett Domain validity case. Simultaneously Northeastern filed their motion for. Against summary judgment, I guess it would be. The documents get exchanged, both parties have several weeks to provide some kind of responses and so on, and then. By early November, all the files are officially. Served with the court. The Judge Carp will likely hold a briefing. Sometime before Thanksgiving. And he'll set a hearing date. Our attorney seemed to think that that. That hearing date might be before Christmas, you know, in December. That is sort of. From what our attorney explained, it would be kind of a quick, short interval between the briefing and the hearing. And that's because this judge is quite familiar with the case and has a lot of background already, so. Given that background, he might. Hold, set this hearing date sooner rather than later, and then if so. Within the first sixty days of next year, Judge Carp would likely make his judgment on this phase. So far, our attorneys, there have been no surprises really. So that's the, that's the status of the Emmett Domain case. Any? Questions or comments or anything, Gene? Or Tony?
Not, not on each point, no.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Town Administrator's report. Tony, you want to take it away?
Yes. Our special time meeting recap, we held a special time meeting and related to the Coast Guard Housing Demolition Project and. I just want to thank, you know, everyone that attended the meeting. We had a full house and it was great to see so many people show up for such an important meeting. On a, you know, a Tuesday night in September. You know, it was, it's good that, you know, such an important issue. You know, rose to the level where so many people came and attended that meeting and there are a lot of great questions asked and. I think we had a lot of good discussion and. Ultimately, the vote passed by a two-thirds majority. So I. I spoke with or I, I reached out to American Environmental and Vicki Missone, who's our project manager. They're initiating the contracting process. And we're hoping to schedule a, you know, a pre. Pre-construction meeting onsite in the next couple of weeks. Likely I'll have. D P W Police and Fire join us for that, just so, you know, we're. You know, fully aware of, you know, what to expect and, you know, try to minimize impacts to the neighborhood and, you know, trucking in and out of town. You know, that sort of thing, so. We're moving forward with that process now. Hurricane Lee recap, we dodged a bullet there, luckily it was, it was, you know, just some really, some, some good wind, but. Not a lot of storm surge, not a lot of rain. Luckily that bumped out, but we had a, it was, we had a very productive. Pre-storm prep meeting with emergency management. You know, I got my hats off to Chief Burlong as our Emergency Management Director, his team. Chief Antrim. Zach Taylor. Rob Tibor, Harvard Master. Our public health nurse was there, members of the board were there. You know, we just. When these events start threatening our community, you know, those, those, that group of people don't take it lightly and. You know, afterwards it's easy, it's like, hey, that wasn't, that was a nothing type storm, but that's a good, we're happy to be over-prepared and, and for nothing to happen, so. You know, we did, we was, I just wanted to, you know, recognize their efforts. And, you know, hopefully we get lucky like that. For the rest of the hurricane season. If, if I could, Tony, if I could, just a, a quick comment. The, the meetings, the emergency management meeting was so well done. That we couldn't have been any better prepared for that storm had it, had it landed. Than we were, and, and as you said, my hats off to, to whoever put it together and, and how it came together, that's great.
Yeah, appreciate seeing the proactive approach rather than the reactive approach to. To the storm, so I think that's, that's definitely progress over the last few years for sure.
Yeah, I was. Those, though, they can do it in their, they can do it with their eyes closed, they've done it so many times now and. But it's still, you know, we've. There's still so much, you know, every single storm is unique. Depending on the direction that it's coming from, the direction of the wind, the wind speeds, what time it's gonna hit us, what the high tides look like in comparison to that. You know, the temperature of the water, the temperature of the air, luckily this type of storms, you know, we're not dealing with. Sometimes we're also dealing with a snowstorm at the same time, so you know, the same folks at the D P W that are helping. React to flooding are also plowing the roads, so this was kind of a straight-up hurricane storm to prep for, but. You know, those types of meetings. We do them every single time because every single storm is unique, so. Hats off to them, great job by them. The other thing in my report here is the Little Nahat Playground, our two new. Pieces of equipment were delivered this week and installed. Our D P W is doing a great job there, thank you to G and J Tony for helping us out with the unload. The next steps are to install, they've already poured the footings for the new benches that are gonna be put there. Those, those benches were memorial benches, so we were able to. Save the memorial plaques from the old benches and transfer them to the new ones. New surface, new sand is gonna be laid down, some other items as well and, you know, edging along the playground, but it's coming along and. You know, we're excited to have. The new pieces in town, and that is funded primarily by Community Preservation Act, which is such a, you know, that, that's where you really see how valuable that pro, that. That program is and the how valuable that money is, because it allows us to do projects like that, that, you know, that's a. That's in the want category, not so much a need, like a broken sewer pipe or, you know, critical infrastructure. That's where that program comes into play and, you know, it just does wonders for our community, so.
I think the, I think the match, the state match on that CPC grant that year was like close to a hundred percent. So almost a dollar for every, you know, like ninety-six cents for every dollar we, we paid for, so excellent program.
That's right.
When, when do you think it'll be done, Tony, that's the playground?
You know, depending on weather and other. I think we only have like one more cut across the town as far as landscaping goes, which we really desperately needs. But it's, the grass is finally starting to slow down. Which really takes a lot of our man-hours away from projects like that and into other, you know, routine operations, so. I'm hoping, I'm hoping we're looking at a ribbon cutting next week or maybe the week after.
Great, yeah. It looks cool.
Yeah, it's exciting. I, I didn't even know that those pieces of equipment were coming from Colorado and the. The husband and wife who actually delivered them to town. Said that they were stopped, you know, every mile along the way by people, you know, seeing the whale and seeing the shipwreck and. Wondering where they were going, like, you know. So she said she was gonna write like a little storybook about, you know, the. How the humpback whale from Colorado found its way to the hot Massachusetts, so. I said, all right, it's awesome, send it to me when you're done.
Yeah, cool.
The other couple of things I just wanted to mention is, we made a lot of, made some significant progress today in our sewer capital. Sewer capital needs, so our. Public bid for, our bid documents for the Wardrobe Pump Station went live today. Their, the pre-bid meeting is gonna be September twenty-seventh. Filed sub-bids will be due October eleventh, and then general sub-bids are due October eighteenth. So that's, that's a huge project that went out on the street today and, you know, we were able to get it designed and. Through the D E P Technical Review in a timely fashion, according to the required. Schedule under the S R F program, so that was a big. That was a big accomplishment, and we also put out to bid. The I I work, which is the gravity sewer repair work, which is a, you know, required. Work through our A C O P from, from D E P. That is going to be. Those, those bids are gonna be due on October fourth. So, you know, between the pump station, which is estimated, you know, somewhere around six million dollars and. The I I work is estimated somewhere around, you know, one point five. You know, we, we put about eight million dollars worth of capital work out to bid today. Which is, you know, a significant step in our. Our capital structure, you know, capital goal, so.
Yeah.
Didn't have that on the agenda, but it just got, it just went out today, so wanted to mention it.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that, that's great, you know, the. The two biggest, you know, capital infrastructure projects, you know, we've had in quite a lo, quite a while, it was the, you know, the Linway. Horse main relining, which is complete, thankfully, and then this war, the Wardrobe Pump Station, so. Getting after it on the, on these big projects, and the I I is a big project. Unto itself, as you pointed out, Tony, so. Yeah. Good to see us getting after these long-term needs.
Those were, those were taking up a lot of our, a lot of time, you know, making sure that we, because that. S R F program had such strict deadlines. You know, we really had to prioritize those projects because they're funded through that program. Now that those are on the street, we're gonna focus on. The water and stormwater repair work, you know, water infrastructure, which is Foxville Road and Emerald Road. And then stormwater improvements in the Lowlands area, those are gonna go out as one bid as well. Obviously, we're, you know, making, we're gonna start. You know, the construction process of the Coast Guard Housing Demolition. And then we have. Flash Road, Pickleball. For lighting to do, and we also have the. Flagpole at the Town Hall is kind of net, those two things are next on the list, and simultaneously, we're. We're still working through a number of other capital things, I met with FEMA today, we have a, or M E M A today on a weekly progress. Our bi-weekly progress meetings and we're working on, you know, our Short Beach Dune over by Little Mahant. As well as. You know, some other capital needs like the ADA ramp at the Town Hall and. Trying to figure out what our best plan forward is for the archwork at the cemetery, so there's still a lot of projects that, you know, luckily we have the funding. Or, you know, at least a good portion of the funding, the COA kitchens and other ones, so a lot of, a lot of different things in the hopper, but. You know, these two. you know, these two were major and, you know, making sure we met those deadlines by the SRF program was important.
Yeah. Good.
That's all I have.
All right. All right. Um, so next on, next on the agenda is uh Citizens Forum.
Can I just, Josh, let's take one thing in there. Tony and Josh, yourself too. I received a request from Linda Jenkins uh to be put on the agenda tonight. I don't know if anybody received it. Uh, and if for an event that the library is intending on running in, in October, and I believe they're looking to use the town hall. My question is, did we receive that or did you guys get a copy?
Yes.
Okay. So we, we'll deal with that next meeting?
Likely, but I, I spoke with um so that's a, an event on behalf of the library trustees. And I spoke with Anne Spurn two days ago and, and I told her, you know, it's, it, the date is available. We just have to finalize the paperwork. You know, as far as them being able to begin the process of, you know, getting their um ducks in a row and advertising and things of that nature, they can go ahead and do that. It's just a matter of getting some more paperwork settled up before I put it in front of you guys for approval. But I don't, I don't see any issue with them getting started on working through that.
And thanks for the follow-up on that, Tony.
Yep.
All right. Anything else, Gene or?
No.
All right, let's um, let's open Citizens Forum. Um, if, have any questions or comments? Unmute yourself, raise your hand in the Zoom meeting if you know how. That's one way to raise your hand, Jen. Yeah.
All right. I think you can hear me now. I switched to my cell phone. Okay, good. Um, everything for the Ayla Brown concert was right. And I just want to say there's still tickets available for that. If anybody is interested, they can reach out to me or call the church. Um, it should be a great night.
Jen, can you just state your name and uh address for the record as well?
Jennifer McCarthy, nineteen Range Road.
Thank you.
Okay. And then um, the main reason I wanted to talk during the Citizens Forum is I sent emails out to all of you. Um, I do live across from the Bayside and um there has been a change in ownership of the actual building and the functions. And um, there has been several problems there. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Tony, Tony was so still. I didn't know if I was frozen.
I'm, I'm taking notes.
Um, so recent, um, most recently was this past Friday night. Um, I woke up around ten o'clock. I'm a teacher, so it was our first full week of teaching. So I have teacher tiredness on Friday nights and was sound asleep by seven thirty. And at ten o'clock, noise woke me up and I was fine with that. I'm like, it's ten o'clock. They're having a party. You know, I bought a house across from a function hall. I expect to hear noise. Um, and then I fell back to sleep and at about twenty of one, there were cars out there beeping their horns, blaring music. People were outside screaming and singing. There was one car that was like revving its engine. It was like a sports car. And then it was driving down Range Road, going back into the Bayside parking lot, holding a huge flag out the window. And it was just like a free-for-all out there. Um, and so I'm curious as to what are our bylaws for these function halls and what time their parties are supposed to end?
Hmm. Uh, well, first of all, um, I received, uh, I think all of us received your email, Jen, and uh, including the video. Doesn't sound great. Um, we're looking into that. Um, I know there's been some conversation with the chief and so on. Um, as far as when the events, I think all the liquor licenses go to one AM. Is that right, Tony? Remember Dan?
They do. Uh, their Sunday time might be earlier. It might, it might be ten. Uh, but for a Friday night, it would have been one PM.
One AM?
Uh, I'm sorry. Yeah, one AM.
Okay. And I was told, um, I did check with the police. They said there was a detailed police officer on site until one. Um, and I, I love our police. They are so responsive. They're wonderful. But I have to wonder, what was the police officer doing that was running the detail? Because obviously the party was outside in the parking lot and not inside. So um, you know, I, I would just question what was going on there with the detail. And again, uh, nothing against our police. I love our police department. They helped so many people. They've helped me so many times. But, you know, I, I asked when I went to the police station to find out if there was a detail. They said, oh, yes. And I said, well, you know, they didn't have any issues with the noise or the horns or the car revving. And they said, oh, he must have been inside. Which doesn't, I, I don't know. I have a problem with that. So I don't know protocol or whatever could be reviewed as to what's actually
Yep. Okay. Well, thanks.
If I can, if you, if you'd like me to comment on it, Josh. Since, since, you know, so there was a, there was one previous event um, that Jen, you had reported to us. Uh, and at that time, you know, we spoke with the owner of the property. Um, and since then, they've required that the, not only there be a detail, but that they hire their own security as well. Uh, so that was an improvement. Um, this is the second event that I know of that's occurred. Um, and I spoke, I followed up with the chief of police. I also followed up with the owner once again. Um, there was a detail, they were inside the function hall because they were helping clear the party out. Um, and as soon as you called the, the police department, the uh detail officer was called. And by the time they came outside, those, those cars had been gone. Um, so, you know, it's obviously it's much, you know, it's harder to hear what's going on outside when you're standing in a function hall trying to clear it out versus when you're in your house. You know, and there's no other noise. You're waking up, you know, you, you had a nice quiet scenario. Uh, except for what was happening outside at the time. So they didn't, they didn't hear it on their own. But as soon as they came outside, you know, they had dispersed. Um, uh, but I'll tell you that the uh the owner of the property informed me that of his intentions to uh, you know, have a community meeting with the abutters in the area. Um, to talk about some of the issues that is, that have happened. He said that he's already spoken with the uh Lesti and that there may be some changes occurring uh to help prevent those things from happening in the future. Um, so I, I would keep an eye on, I think, I think that's going to happen soon. Um, but I think I, I think progress is uh is starting already too.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jen. Uh, Brendan?
Brendan, Veronica, I'm said to Summer Street. Um, general uh question, uh, I've been on the weekends, I've been, when I've been coming back from the store, I've been noticing about four or five um, streetlights between Little Nahat and Seaside Variety Store that are on during the daytime. And I was just kind of wondering if that's like a maintenance issue or um, just uh something to be looked at later.
You know anything about that, Tony? I don't.
I don't. Um, so it's the neck between Little Nahat and Seaside.
Yeah, there's like uh two or three of them from Little Nahat to the Coast Guard Station, then from Coast Guard Stations to Seaside Variety. I think there's another two. They've, they've been on during the daytime.
What, what time of day?
Um, generally this has been like the middle of the afternoon, like, you know, like one, three, one to three o'clock.
Maybe the photos, I think most of them are on photo centers. So maybe the photo center is on the fritz or something. So
That's all I got.
Did we have any bad weather at that time?
No, this is, this has been all during sunny days so that, like, I've seen it as several weekends in a row.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Uh, Michelle?
Michelle Capone on twenty-nine Ocean Street. Just to follow up on Brendan's comment, um, we had a similar situation on Ocean Street where the streetlight in front of my house was on all day. Um, I did report it to Mary Lowe at Town Hall and within a month, the company came out and serviced them. So um, I guess the question is, and to Brendan's point, I recently noticed it as well. Um, is it something to, you know, let residents know to report them if they're seeing they're running on all day. We're paying, the taxpayers paying the electric bill. So we want to make sure that the timers are operating properly.
Yeah, there's a uh, on the hunt.org, there's a uh, there's a report. Let me look at it. Let me look real quick where it is. So we have something set up right on the website. Very easy to report it.
Thank you.
Is it, is calling Mary Lowe, is it, is that also a reasonable alternative don't here?
Oh, yeah. Oh, always calling the town hall and, and, and pushing the button for Public Works and talking with Mary Lowe is always an, an option. Uh, we also have, I'll just um show the Nahat home screen here. Under, right here, this is the home screen on the hot.org. Uh, right here under helpful, like, uh, what can we help you with? Right in the middle of the page under Public Works, there's a uh streetlight service request link right there.
Great. All right. So those, those are two things that um, people can do, Michelle, that'd be helpful if um um, the town halls noted by. Um, anyone else? Or anything in the chat, Tony?
Like light on the heart and ocean have been on all day, all summer. So at the intersection of Nahat and Ocean Street, is that the same one that you're talking about, Michelle? Or was it, was it?
I, I think she's, no, it's not the old same one. There's one like almost right in front of Michelle's house. And then that one you just described was essentially in front of Mark Coleman's house.
Yeah. So that's a new one, the one in front of Mark, Mark's house, but this was in front of my house, which has already been resolved. So um, but for my situation, I had just emailed Mary directly and she was very helpful. Um, it just took about a month for them, the company to come out. Um, which she had told me when she responded, but knowing now that you showed where the form is, I think that's excellent. If residents see other lights in town on during the day, they should report them.
Yeah. And, and it is going to be like a month because we have them, we have them come out. We try to kind of don't have them come out for just one issue. We try to come, come out for a bulk number of issues just for, you know, cost savings. So um, usually that's about a month.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Very helpful.
All right. Thanks, Michelle and Brendan for bringing that up. Um, anything else? Anybody else want to unmute themselves or enter something into the chat? Um, anything in the chat, Tony?
No.
All right. Um, well, unless there's anything else, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, Gene.
Motion for German.
Seconded. Any discussion? Here and seeing none, roll how vote.
Gene, can't the eye?
Josh, Andrew, my. Thank you, everyone.
Night, all.
Done.
All right. Thank you.